So we have your Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Respecio, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Espaldon, Senator Titegri, Senator Ada, Senator Ray Tenorio, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Blas, Ogun Jr., Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Palacios. Can we please call for two more senators because we will be voting in a few minutes? A minute. Senator Leysa Chan Guahan is called to order. We are on the voting file, and you should have copies of the bills on your desk. So we're going to start with the first bill, which is Bill Number 32-30. And ask if the clerk could read the bill.
Bill Number 32-30 COR is amended on the floor, introduced by E. J. B. Cavill, Thier Munia Barnes, R. Z. Respecio. An act to resolve a certain partial in the municipality of Mingilo from single-family residential R1 Zone to commercial C Zone.
Senator TC Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Senator TC Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Espaldon. Senator TC Ada. Bill Number 32-30 received 10 yays and 5 nays votes. Bill Number 32-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 345-30 LS.
Bill Number 345-30 LS is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by Tele Titegri, BJF Cruz, Adolfo B. Palacios Sr. An act to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 30 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Office of the Attorney General to recover costs associated with providing statutorily mandated legal services to agencies and programs that are not supported by the tax base of the government of Guam.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Substitute Bill Number 345-30 LS received 15 yay votes. Substitute Bill Number 345 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 407.
Bill Number 407-30 COR is amended on the floor, introduced by VC Pangilinen, TC Ada, Judith P. Wampat, EDD, Thier Munia Barnes, Judith P. Guthers, DPA, FB Ogun Jr., B. Anthony Ada, FF Blas Jr. An act to add a new Section 1127 to Chapter 1, Title 2, Guam Code Annotated, relative to honoring those killed in action by the designation of e. Milajan Mastat Kiluna sacrificial.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Senator Blas. Is any supposed to be out? Bill Number 407-30 received 13 yay votes and 2 nay votes. Bill Number 407-30 is unanimously passed by this body. I mean, I'm sorry. Yeah. It was passed by this body, 13, too. Too much Tylenol in my system. Sorry, I forgot.
Bill Number 188-30 COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by JV Espaldon. An act amend Section 61531 of Part 4, Article 5 of Chapter 61, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to expanding the provisions of the automobile parking space provision.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Substitute Bill Number 188-30 received 15 yay votes. Substitute Bill Number 188 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 383-30 LS.
Bill Number 383-30 LS is amended on the floor, introduced by R. Z. Respecio, Judith P. Guthers, DPA. An act to repeal and reenact Section 8101 of Chapter 8 of Title 2 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the registration and regulation of legislative lobbyists.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Senator VA Ada. Senator Blas. Bill Number 383-30 received 14 yay votes and 1 nay. Bill Number 383 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 394-30.
Bill Number 394-30 COR is amended on the floor, introduced by FF Blas Jr., VA Ada, VC Pangilinen, FB Ogun Jr. An act amend Sections 15105 and to repeal and reenact Section 15107A2 of Chapter 15 of Title 18 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to limited liability companies.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Bill Number 394-30 received 15 yay votes. Bill Number 394 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 410-30.
Bill Number 410-30 COR is amended on the floor, introduced by FB Ogun Jr., VC Pangilinen. An act to repeal and reenact subsection G and to add a new subsection H of Section 3011, Article 8, Chapter 3 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to restoring the community health center consults authorization to access and expend funds from the community health center revolving fund and to ensuring accountability by requiring monthly financial report and an annual audit.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Bill Number 410-30 received 15 yay votes. Bill Number 410 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 414-30.
Bill Number 414-30 COR is substituted by the Committee on Rules, Natural Resources, and Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, and amended on the floor, introduced by Tele Titegri, R. Z. Respecio, BJF Cruz, TC Ada. An act to add a new Section 49119 and a new Section 49104R to Chapter 49 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the ultra low sulfur diesel fuel standard for diesel fuel in Guam.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Cruz, I mean Guthers, I'm sorry. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Substitute Bill Number 414-30 received 15 yay votes. Bill Number 414 is unanimously passed by this body. Senators, we're still voting, so please keep the volume down. Bill Number 195-30.
Bill Number 195-30 COR is substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor, introduced by VC Pangilinen, FB Ogun Jr. An act to repeal and reenact Section 51821 of Article 8, Chapter 51 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the use of proceeds on sale of bonds.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Aye, aye. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. I'm putting my school in. I'm putting my teacher's salary in. Substitute Bill Number 195-30 received 15 yay votes. Substitute Bill Number 195 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 252-30.
Bill Number 252-30 COR introduced by VC Pangilinen. An act amend Section 4301A and to add new sections, 4301.1D and 4302.1 of Article 3, Chapter 4 of Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the government of Guam Employee Health Benefits Trust Fund by the Division of Accounts of the Department of
Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Bill Number 252-30 received 15 yay votes. Bill Number 252 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 388-30.
Bill Number 388-30 COR introduced by VC Pangilinen. An act to add a new subsection G to Section 50103.1 of Article 1, Chapter 50 of Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to local sale of bonds.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Bill Number 388-30 received 15 yay votes. Bill Number 388 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 416-30.
Bill Number 416-30 COR is substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor, introduced by FB Ogun Jr. An act amend subsections A and B of Section 12203 of Part 1, Article 2, and subsections A and B of Section 12803 of Part 1, Article 8 of Chapter 12 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to provisions applicable to the Board of Medical Examiners and the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Substitute Bill Number 416-30 received 15 yay votes. Substitute Bill Number 416 is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 386-30.
Bill Number 386-30 COR amended on the floor, introduced by FB Ogun Jr., FF Blas Jr. An act to repeal and reenact Chapter 80 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the autonomy of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Row call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinen. Senator Respecio. Senator Titegri. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat. Bill Number 386-30 received 15 yay votes. Bill Number 386 is unanimously passed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of Imago La Haan Guahan on the matter of v. Notwithstanding the objections of Imago La in Guahan on the matter of vetoed bill three fifty-nine dash thirty. I'll ask the clerk to please read the bill.
Vetoed bill number three fifty-nine dash thirty, C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith P. Guthers, D P A, T C Ada, V Anthony Ada, and others. An act to add new subsections A, B, and C to section seventy-six two twelve of article two, chapter seventy-six of title twenty-one Guam Code annotated, relative to prohibiting the transfer of all prehistoric and historic properties, antiquities, and objects owned by the people of Guam or in the inventory of the government of Guam without legislative concurrence.
Roll call.
Senator T C Ada.
Yes.
Senator V A Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangilinen.
Yes.
Senator Respechio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Aye.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampe. I'm good. Senator Titegri.
Yes.
On the matter of vetoed bill number three fifty-nine dash thirty, notwithstanding the objections of Imago La in Guahan, the votes were thirteen yays, two nays. Vetoed bill number three fifty-nine is overridden by this body. Senator Respechio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise pursuant to section ten point oh five of the standing rules under reconsideration. It's my understanding that the member would like to reconsider their vote on bill three eighty-three, which is the legislative lobbyist bill, and that Senator being Senator Titegri. And this rule provides that any member may, on the day on which a vote has been taken on any question in the third reading of the voting file, including reconsideration of bills vetoed, bills or resolutions, I, item one, I make a motion to reconsider a vote on that legislative day, or make a motion to reconsider a vote on the following legislative eight affirmative votes shall be required to pass either motion or reconsider. But in this case, the member just needs to make a motion to reconsider a vote on that legislative day, and I make that motion on her behalf.
On the motion to reconsider, are there any objections? Objections to the order? So the bill then to vote on, and this will be a roll call vote, which is bill number three eighty-three dash thirty, and I ask of the clerk, can you please read the bill?
Point of vote, I think Madam Speaker, you just recognized the senator, and she cast her vote, and I don't know. We have to revote?
No, it'd be the real, to revote.
We can revote, then, either way.
Everybody revotes. So bill number three, three eighty-three.
She's only permitted to change her vote. Stay the course.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
I suppose to call everyone, roll call for everyone. Yes. Do it all over. Senator T C Ada?
Yes.
Senator V A Ada?
Yes.
Senator Agun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinen?
Yes.
Senator Respechio? Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampe. I'm good. Bill number three eighty-three dash thirty received fifteen yea votes. Bill number three eighty-three is unanimously passed by this body. No, twenty-nine. Okay, on the appointment of Mr. Wilford G. Afflecky to serve as the Director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abused. Roll call. T C Ada?
Yes.
V A Ada?
Yes.
Senator Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz?
No.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinen?
Yes.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampe. On the appointment of Mr. Wilford G. Afflecky to serve as Director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, you received fourteen yea votes and one nay, fourteen and one nay. Mr. Wilford G. Afflecky was duly confirmed by this body to serve as the Director of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. Senator Respechio, a motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move that we recess until two P M. tomorrow.
So the legislature will be in recess until two P M. tomorrow to begin the budget process.